Order at four o'clock.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome back to our latest school committee budget workshop. We have a workshop this evening. Tonight's workshop is going to focus on special education. Special education is a huge part of our school budget, so we've got Director Stacy Bissell and Assistant Director Tammy Delaney here to try to help us break that down a little bit to understand. We, our next budget workshop is scheduled for next Monday after this one. And that, at that meeting, we're going to be really focusing in on those positions that we're paying with ESER funds. As you know, ESER funds have a three-year window to be expended, and we are in year number two, so we do have a recommendation to put forward, and we'll go over those positions next Monday as we move this along. For tonight's meeting, this is one of those things when you start looking at special education, it's huge. And so I think what our challenge tonight is going to be is to make sure that we can keep this focused on the budget. We have made plans to put together a special education advisory committee, and so there may be some things that we talk about tonight that may be good topics to be able to go back and do that. But tonight, we're going to try to keep our work focused on the special education budget. We've got a slide presentation that Stacy and Tammy have put together to help guide us through that. One thing I would say is we're always careful when we are having public meetings in terms of honoring confidentiality and honoring FERPA. And so sometimes in special education, that gets to be, it can be challenging maybe at times. So I ask us also to, as we always start these meetings, to reiterate the importance of confidentiality and making sure that we are protecting people's privacy as we try to learn more about special education and its impact on our budget for it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy and Tammy as they can help us as they present the special education 2023-2024 budget.
Thing, we're pretty much a tag team, so we fill in for each other, so it'll flow. You can stop us whenever and ask questions. In thinking about this, it was about how to take a beast and have people understand how things flow down. So the first part we thought would be, I say to people all the time, if you are a black and white person, and that's where you like to live, special ed might not be the right bus for you, because we live a lot in the gray in terms of how we approach and what we plan for students. And so the best way to look at that is, that's why we have the piece that we have right now on there. We have state and federal regulations, and those are very specific, and those are very specific and provide timetables that most other laws don't. For example, you have to have written notice out to the parent for a meeting seven days prior to the meeting, or you have to get permission signed at the meeting to waive that. There's membership of the IEP team that's defined by the federal and state regulations. When transition planning starts, there's a specific date given. So those are just some examples of those parameters. The gray area happens with the case law and the interpretation of the regulations. So you have, at your basic level, due process hearings. So if a parent who is an equal member at the IEP does not agree with the determination, they have a right to exercise due process with this Department of Ed and file either a complaint or a due process hearing. So those decisions get made by due process and hearing officers, and the interpretation of the statute is, can change. And I have three examples that I think are easy to understand but can show the impact. If a parent or a school district is not happy with a due process decision, they can appeal to the district court level. And if they're not happy with that, it can go to Maine Superior Court, and then it goes to First Circuit. Vermont, Maine, Puerto Rico, Massachusetts are covered, so any decision made in the First Circuit covers us. And then there's also the Supreme Court. So the three examples, Andrew F., the Rhode Island First Circuit decision, and then Chapter 33, which was a state determination, Tammy and I thought would be good examples to explain how you have the federal law, but the interpretation drives how you program for kids. Does that make sense? Ask any questions. Amy? Okay. So, no, you were looking like, I have a question. Okay. So the Andrew F. was a Supreme Court determination, so it affects everybody in all of the United States. We have always had a free and appropriate public education as one of the pillars in special ed. Appropriate means making progress towards goals. It's not the maximum benefit. It doesn't mean the best the child can do. We want the best for students, but the measure is, are they making progress in their goals over time? So there was language, and I'm happy to send you the link if you want to read these decisions, there was language that defined what appropriate meant before the Andrew F. decision. That definition and how you measure appropriate changed significantly with this Supreme Court decision. So we've always had a free and appropriate public education, and that meant one thing, a much lower bar in terms of what progress meant by law. And then with this Supreme Court, they made a decision that expanded what appropriate and progress meant. So that's how the decisions made in this box in between have a major impact, and it's more than just understanding the state and federal regulations.
Stacy, they have an impact on the budget.
Absolutely.
In essence, that's something that we're, as you're coming back, putting your budget together.
Yes.
That you have to keep in mind.
So Rhode Island is a really good example of impact on budget. That was a First Circuit decision, Maine's in the First Circuit. It wasn't one that was in Maine. And basically, what it said was, you are now responsible for programming for students through the age in which they turn 22. That had not been the regulations in Maine prior to last January, and it was a one-day notice. We got an email from the Department of Ed saying they'd come to a resolution about the eligibility and when it ended, and it was moving to the, when you turn 22. So prior to that, it had been the year in which you turned 20, right? So if you turned 20 in October, you would remain there in the school district through that year. If you turned 21 in August, you would not be coming that next year. You would have aged out. So now we have a higher age limit for students that we're required to provide education for. And in special ed, you stop receiving or stop having eligibility under special ed if you get a diploma or if you age out. So one of the things I think is important for you guys and the public to know is, that decision to change the age to 22 really impacts our most involved and kids with the most significant needs, because some of those kids would not be able to receive a high school diploma. They may have a handicapping condition of autism. So the impact of that particular law is huge to the budget and to programming, because in a high school class, we no longer would typically have 14 to 18, maybe a 19-year-old. We now are looking at 14 to 22, which means that we're gonna, we need different programming for the 18 to 22-year-olds. And that's something we've not had to consider in terms of developing new programming, having new staff. And then the last one, and I'll let you speak to this, because you live in Chapter 33 land.
Unfortunately.
Is the Chapter 33.
So Chapter 33 is our law around restraint and seclusion. It's not just about restraint and seclusion, but it gives us all of the language that we need to follow around. What is a prompt? What is a physical intervention and all of those pieces? The big piece about Chapter 33 is that when a student is involved in something that's restrictive, a restraint or a seclusion, we have to write a report. And that report requires us to provide a bunch of different information that goes to the family, and there's, again, timelines around how quickly we need to get this information out to the parents. It also gets reported to central office, that gets reported to the state. So when a student has three incidences of restraint or seclusion, we have to meet, and it's called a Chapter 33 meeting. And the purpose of that meeting is to really talk about what happened, what were, what were the circumstances around that restraint or seclusion, what are things that we could be doing differently, what are we going to do when we leave that meeting that's going to be different to try to prevent what happened? That's kind of like the whole purpose of that meeting. Sometimes it is, we're not going to do anything because we just started a behavior plan, and we need time for it to, to roll out and kind of to work, to show if it's going to work or not. Sometimes it's, well, the student hasn't had a behavior support plan, and now we have to really put something in, or we have to beef it up because they haven't needed anything beyond general classroom management, and now they need something more in depth. And then other times, it's, the behavior may be to such a degree that we have to look at, what does the program look like that they're currently in, and do we need to change programming or placement? And so that placement could be a variety of different things. It might mean that they have to go into, or not have to, but to program from them, it might be more successful for them to go into a more restrictive classroom. Or sometimes it might mean that they need to go into a more restrictive program, and that's when we're looking at an out-of-district placement or, or the bridge. And so there's the impact there on the budget. There's also another law we didn't put in, but it kind of goes with this. It's the, it's the dangerous student law, and I'm sure there's a different name to that, but that's kind of how I, I remember it. And that's, even if it's students not in special education, but that they are to such a degree creating very dangerous environment, we would do the same thing. We would have this kind of a meeting. We would talk about, do they need a behavior support plan? Do they need to have a functional behavior assessment done? Like, what's the purpose of this behavior? And then, is this student safe enough to be in the classroom? And so there's a lot of different variables that we have to look at to determine that. And then again, look at programming. So the impact might be that we're increasing our numbers in our self-contained programs that we already have. We might need additional support because of the dangerous behaviors that are happening, or it's already happening in our programs and to such a degree that we need to have a different kind of placement or program for that student. So, anything else?
Nope. Those are just examples about how it impacts. The other thing, just so everybody knows, is that Tam and I have a spot on this, so we have a special advisory topic. So I'm sure some, like, we have things in our, our heads, but I'm sure things will come up, and we'll go, that's a great topic for the, like, the 18 to 22-year-olds. The state hasn't had the stakeholder meeting yet to talk about the impact of this change. That, to me, is a really good topic around looking at what the needs are, what we don't even have the programming, how are we gonna move forward with developing that for Sanford?
So you're saying that in this budget, that doesn't exist yet?
No.
Okay.
We only have two students right now. It just happened last year. We had one student that came in in her twenties, and that is not something, that's a, that is something that will happen much more often now, which we had not had before. So I think the other part, just to add, is with the Chapter 33, the piece that doesn't get identified a lot is that what comes out of those things is functional behavioral assessments, risk assessments, lots of things you guys deal with as board members. And so how do we look at our existing staffing patterns? Because right now, those additional things that are required under the Chapter 33 law end up happening with our existing staff. So I think there's a lot more risk assessment in those pieces, and it's like, who, who is it that does that? And if we don't do it internally, we source it outside, which is an expense. So trying to relate this stuff with the impact financially. The special ed process, the next line, I'm not sure, this may be a topic we want to go over. Beth, next slide. This may be something that we, would be something we dive into deeper in the special ed advisory committee, just talking about the special education process and how it flows. I put it up there because there's a lot of steps, and there's a lot of pieces that need to happen. And in order for that to happen, there's evaluations, and there's many people on the team that come together. This is the process that happens when a student needs to go through the referral process, and then you have a similar process when you're talking about an annual review and a, and a reevaluation triennial review. What's important about this, in my opinion, related to the budget, is that when the law was written, the idea was that you would generally have a meeting once a year on a student that may or may not be making progress. That is no longer the reality. You have many meetings on one student multiple times a year. And so it just, that drives into, when we get to other parts of this presentation, the capacity piece. I don't know if that's something you want to spend more time on. I thought it was important to put in, but to me, it's a topic for, go through the whole process, see what works, what do we need to change within the regs? Questions? No? So what you have is the level, I can't look up there and do this. Okay. You have the four, we have levels that we have to identify. Students are Level A, are students that need less than 80%, 20% of their time in special ed, 80% of their time in mainstream. And that's the number of students that we have right now in K to 12. Then you have Level B, and that could be a student that has many more needed services. It might be multiple content areas. They might go to the resource room for both written language and mathematics. It may mean that they're in the resource room for a course, and they're in one of the self-contained programs with direct instruction and social skills. Level C is our self-contained students, and those are students typically that have one of three handicapping conditions. You're either talking handicapping condition of autism, emotional disturbance, and sometimes you'll see other health impaired, but that's indicating that there's an emotional disability of anxiety, or it's indicating that their attention deficit is to an extreme level. Those students are the ones that are, they require the most services, the most related services, and this is also in a Level C, when you talk about, you can have eight students in a classroom with a teacher and an ed tech. If you have 13, you have to add another ed tech. So, and then we have our Level D, which is the most restrictive placement that we have in the state of Maine. And those are students that are either, would have been placed out of district, or now we currently have the bridge, which has expanded elementary, middle, and high school. So in totality, those 29 students, of them, four of them are tuitioned. So 25 of those students would be in out-of-district placements, but we have a bridge-intensive program that can meet their needs. So that just gives a framework. And of course, the more you move from Level A to Level D, what that tells you is, is that the more services that are necessary for that student in order to be successful in school. So it may just be that it's speech and language, and that, that is a speech and language person for a variety of students on their caseload. When you get to Level C and Level D, you're really talking about clinical services, behavior interventionists, self-contained programming, ed techs. So you can see how that has an impact on the budget.
Stacy, when we went through the construction and the reorganization recently, one of the things that we wanted to do when we closed Lafayette School and then closed Willard and moved over to Sanford-Pride Elementary, we wanted to make sure that there was equity amongst the district when it came to, especially around facilities and resources and opportunities for students. That was a big push, and I'm proud that we have made a lot of strides in that area. That's no disrespect to those other schools that we closed. They were wonderful schools, but there were differences in resources. So that being said, though, we didn't, there are some special education services that are unique to certain of our elementary schools. So as you go back to that screen with the four, can you speak to where those, get an idea for the programming to know? We're not offering the exact same programming at each elementary school.
No. So we did look at, in the last budget season, you know, what would it take to have Carl J. Lamb also service students with an emotional disability? And at that time, it would have been more additional teachers and ed techs in a building that doesn't, there wasn't a lot of classrooms, but in, in looking at that, it was going to be quite an expense down the road. Typically, what we've done is that Carl J. Lamb, when you look at the Level C services, every school district has a program that has Level C services or multiple classrooms. The difference is, is that at Carl J. Lamb, they really had done a lot of work for a long time consulting with Spurwink to develop the autism program. So they have varying levels of kids with autism. You don't typically, we don't typically service self-contained level autism students at Pride or at MCS. That is typically students with emotional disabilities that are serviced in those self-contained programs. Then you go to the middle school, and we have both. We have self-contained for kids that have emotional dysregulation. We have self-contained for kids that are severely autistic. So elementary, everybody has a Level C students and programming for students. It just may be that the type of student that they're meeting the needs of is different.
And we do that for efficiencies, obviously.
Correct.
As we come back in to be able to do that, that allows you to have different resources at different schools.
And I was just going to add that, so Carl J. Lamb School right now has seven self-contained programs, classes. The MCS and Pride have three. So there's, there's just a much larger population of student need that's at Carl Lamb. So the related services that are needed to be at Carl Lamb, the OTPT, speech, even social work, there's much more need to work on those areas. Not that it's not in the other buildings, but there's just a lot, much larger student population, much more significant need, and so than needing to have the service providers to be able to touch on those IEP needs for those students. So there's a big difference there. Three for the other.
So I have a quick question, because I'm kind of new to this. Is this something, like, when students end up in these programs, is our goal to get them to move out of the programs versus, you know, like, that's, like, we start them there, and do we have a success rate of shifting kids out of those classrooms?
The overall goal, so there's a tenet, right, a pillar in special ed, which is least restrictive environment. And the whole goal really is to give students the skillsets that they need, help close the gap on certain things, so that they can move to a less restrictive setting. At the same time, we always have to balance that the way that you approach it is identifying the needs of the kids. That leads you to identifying what the goals are that need to be worked on. That leads to the service. What programming does that kid need? And only at the end do you talk about where can that programming happen? So we have a student with needs, and it may be for some students that their success is because they have all of those services. And you can look at the students' evaluations, how they're performing in the classroom, and see that absent those services, they would not be making progress. But the overall goal, every IEP meeting, is to look at, is can that student be educated in a less restrictive setting? And that's not always something that's really popular with families, because we have some families that want to work towards that, and other families, they're just so happy that their child is getting services. They don't want to rock the boat. But that's what we do need to do by law. That was an excellent question.
Yeah, Stacy's exactly right, that oftentimes, when you are making progress and doing well, and then the goal is to move you into a less restrictive environment, you can see how that always isn't welcomed with open arms because of when, in situations like that, some of those supports may go away. So the goal is to be able to work towards that, but you also know that sometimes you're going to have families who, that's, that's, that's a difficult decision, and one that, understandably, is one that comes with a lot of, people get anxious and nervous about that.
I think it's important also just to mention that it is fluid. We can have students that are in Level A that eventually move into Level B, Level C. Sometimes we have C that move into Level B, Level A, just all depending on how their disability is impacting them. As they get older, those things change as well. There's a number of factors that, that play. We have students who may need significant support, so having a one-to-one, and then their LRE comes into play when they're able to develop skills that allow them to be in a two-to-one. So two kids to one adult, or just them, you know, so there's those impact, again, on how much student support is needed, is always fluctuating.
That would be true. The next part, just talking about the funding streams. And so what the law states, right, is that the federal, state, and local governments are responsible for funding K to 12 public school. So we have our local budget. We also have IDEA, which is money directly from the feds. It comes from the feds, it goes to the state, and by a very complicated formula of how ma, it's a complicated formula. It, I can show it to you, send it to you. I just let Cheryl do that part, because the state tells us and awards the IDEA amounts every year. Things about the IDEA is that...
Stacy, and sometimes, what is that based on? Oftentimes, right?
Yep, getting right there, I think.
Okay.
It's a, the, it's based on those students with disabilities and those behind, below the poverty line.
But I don't think every district in the state receives IDEA money.
No.
Typically, I think with us, with the size of our school district, for example?
Yep. No, you're right. The thing is, is that not every, we're a high receiver in terms of IDEA money based on the size of our school. I can't exactly remember the date, but recently, there was a change in the formula. Before, they based it solely on the number of students identified. And then they were concerned, not in our area, but in other states, that, that increased people's likelihood to identify students with disabilities. So they changed the formula to include, it's based on the number of students total and the number of students with disabilities. So, and the poverty line. Those two things flow into, the state has a right to reserve certain amount of the federal money. So what happens is, the state gets awarded, this is the federal amount. And then they do a formula, and different schools get different amounts based on their number of students with special ed, how big they are, and their poverty. So there are some districts that get no IDEA money. The thing that's important about the IDEA is that it's a IDEA application, and so every year, and it's very, very detailed and very, very specific. You have to write a project line, so for example, instruction. And then I need to lay out exactly how many, how we are going to use that money to support instruction for special ed students. That money can only be used for special ed students. And then there is an end-of-the-year report that is due, that I work together with Cheryl's office. And then we have to account for that money. We need to lay out whether the project was successful. An easy example would be, eight years ago, we knew, we didn't have a special ed math curriculum. curriculum that lined up with regular ed, didn't have scope and sequence from K to 12, and it was really something that we knew was necessary. So we invested the money. We already had math instruction, teachers instructing, so we could put that in IDEA. We had a consultant and the plan was train, get people up to speed, have everybody know the program, implement the program, gradually move off of the consultant that was helping and implement this program. And that was successful. The consultant was, done the consultant work at the end of last year. We have identified some super users. It's an area we're going to look at over the summer to really identify in each building. But that's an example of how a project line started and was able to move through. Sometimes you might need more time in a project line. The other big piece about IDEA is that you cannot use it to supplant the budget. So I couldn't say, we don't have any BCBA's in the school district, let's just say. We have absolutely none that work in a behavior interventionist. So I'm going to pay for all of that out of IDEA. That's supplanting the budget. So what, the IDEA money is typically used, right, to supplement what we already have. So there's a lot of ed techs that are required in special education for a variety of reasons. So there are a certain amount of ed techs that come out of the local budget that we talk about. And then there are ed tech positions that are paid out of IDEA. There are social workers that come out of the local budget and we supplement the local budget with some social workers that are paid out of IDEA. We, so that out of district, we have out of district that's in the line for IDEA, local budget. We also have IDEA that's in, out of district in IDEA, psychologists. We have them in the local budget. So as long as we can say we have these positions, it's something the district is supporting with their local money, then we can hire additional, add different positions that are necessary.
So you look at, in essence, we have the local budget, which we're responsible for, but that would be some federal funds through IDEA that special ed has to be able to come back and be able to try to supplement that budget so that we're coming back to do everything we can to meet the needs of students. And what you had is, and Stacy, I'll put you on the spot if you can speak to this, but I think it was a number of years ago, we had a situation where, and you can speak to it, but in essence, what we had to do was to cover, have more positions covered in IDEA, which was not really what its primary intention was. So we've worked hard over that time to try to be able to move some of those positions out of IDEA into the local.
Exactly right. In order to get the minimum number of staffing that we needed, and I believe it was 2007, 2008, when we had that big cliff and the recession and all of those pieces, we had positions that were in the local budget that we had to move into the federal in order to make the numbers work, to meet the needs of students that year. And so we have spent a lot of time every single year looking to move, because one of the pieces that's important about the federal money, there are aspects of the budgeting that fluctuate that we don't have a lot, I can, we can do our best guess, but out of district placements are the big one. So we have kids that, we have three kids that have moved in that were the day treatment needs, Level III autism. We had no idea, wouldn't know that they were coming. We just had a student that moved in that has needs that require a very specialized program in another part of the state. Where on, we have to do that. So it's good to be able to have some funding from IDEA in that, so those things that you don't anticipate, we have an avenue to do that. We're getting there. We're getting back to the place where not every aspect of the budget is paid for with personnel. And that's been over a period of time, but it takes a long time to do it because we're always looking at making sure the impact for the community and taxes is a main area. The last piece that I would say, which is very interesting, and we don't have a problem with this. If the main department of ed sees that we're not spending all of our IDEA money and we can meet the needs of students with the local budget and what comes from the state funding formula, then they can reallocate that money to other districts that need it. Like I said, that has never been, as long as I have been here for 21 years, a problem. We are, we use our federal funds wisely and every penny of them. Any questions about IDEA?
And the IDEA is still in this $11 million local budget? It's, it's still part of this? It's stuff that's completely funded outside of this? Okay.
This year, our award was about a million dollars. So when you look at an $11 million budget, IDEA is about a million dollars and it is 96% made up of staff benefits and salaries.
So I can see why you've never not used it.
So the next part, it's just, I think, the next slide that we have is about the Bridge.
Do you want to talk about main care?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, main care is, it's a reimbursement process that we can reimburse for partial money back in OT services, PT services, and speech and language. What's important to know about main care is that you need to fill out a medical necessity tree. Students need to medically qualify for those services in order for us to be reimbursed. And that there's, parents have to sign off on it and then there's billing that's done every, every month. And that is 100% dependent on how many kids remain in main care or don't remain in main care, that can fluctuate. What parents sign the form and don't sign the form. But as of January 1st, our reimbursement in OT, PT, and speech should be going up. I know that there's been a little bit of a blip in that they said they weren't kind of ready to do the reimbursement at that level. And I know that there's been some pushback on that, but it's a partial reimbursement and you can only reimburse, like I said, with medical necessity. The, the good piece about that is for our students that are Level III autism, severely aut, you know, our most needyest students, meeting that medical necessity is relatively easy. We can demonstrate that need and do the monthly billing.
When you say we've run into resistance, we, who's that? Who, who are those people when you've talked to, you just mentioned?
Oh, like they're, I mean, sometimes the parents like I, you know, I'm not interested in allowing you to do this. Parents have to give permission. Most of the parents do.
Does it have anything to do with if they're getting outside services?
No, I actually got clarified in that you, you can, there's certain ones, I think if you have a school-based Sweetser clinician, or I'm thinking school-based, right, with us, what we provide, and you also are, want to see a therapist, that those two things would conflict. Because the school-based clinician is actually functioning as an outpatient clinician, but we give them a spot and a phone in the school, that's our contract with Sweetser.
And, and do we, we're also, those are our employees or our contracted service people who have to submit those, right? Who have to do that?
Yes.
And we have a process in place to be able to help us be able to stay on top of that, right? Since it does fluctuate, to make sure that we're doing the best we can because that, when you look at it, is a revenue stream on some level.
Yep.
And we use that money to pay for one position?
Correct. So the Bridge, I think this was a, a part of the budget that people were interested in knowing about. And so I changed things added, this is the numbers as of last night. The numbers have now changed as of today in terms of the number of referrals that we have. So-
And just to be clear, we, the budget we have here is fiscal year '24. So when we talk about fiscal year '23, that's the one we're currently in now.
Yes.
And fiscal year '22 was last year.
Correct. So currently, right now, there are a total of 30 students in the Bridge program. And last year, there was a total of 22. You can see that middle school, there wasn't any number in 22 because this is our, our new, oh, I didn't change that net change, which should have been nine. I'm sorry, I was trying to figure that out. There was a new middle school student that's starting tomorrow. And elementary, we have, that student is going to five, but it changes all the time as soon as we do intakes. You can see over on the right-hand side that right now in middle school, there's one student that's in the referral process. The elementary, we have two students in the referral process and now there are two more names that were given to me today. I'm just going to keep it as of last night. And then under tuition students, if I'm correct, Cheryl, the budget was built on four. Is that correct? That's the, the information you had given me, that four tuition students.
I actually put in for six.
No, last year's budget.
Oh, last year.
This year's budget.
Yeah.
This year's budget was built on four. And so this year, we had four tuition students right from the beginning of September. One student has become an adult and is exercising his rights. I expect we'll see him soon again, but right now he's dropped out of school. So in the high school stu, that's just, let me think about this. Oh, I know why. Yes. Middle school, we have three students that are tuitioned. And on the referral side, I think this is the piece, right? There's a high school student that has been referred from another district. We have two elementary students that are waiting from other districts. So we have four, seven students that as of today, as of last night, because today we had an IEP meeting and there could be another tuition student based on a kiddo. So I guess the important stuff for me around this data and giving the numbers as it relates to the budget is that when I look through this, if you take away the tuition students and you take away a couple of the students that are, put the expulsion aside to come to the Bridge, which there are two that are regular ed, the rest of these students would need to go out of district if the Bridge program did not exist.
And that, and so that average cost is anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000, depending on which agency.
I don't know a single placement that's $50,000. Do you?
It depends on how many days they get charged.
I don't, but I think that, I do think that's important to talk about.
That's not, yeah.
Right. We'll get, so when we get to out of district, I do think that's important to talk about as a factor that affects our budget. So, oh, I didn't do the out of district thing because it had all the kids' names on it and we couldn't do it. So when it comes to out of district, I think there's some pieces that need to, people need to be aware of. With out of district placements in the state of Maine, if for some reason Amy sends her student there, Paula, and their kiddo was sick that day, typically they can't bill us for that day. But we have no idea, in order to be fiscally, in my opinion, responsible, an out of district placement ranges from $75,000 to $114,000. And I don't know when, with COVID, we had a lot of students that were out a lot. I don't suspect that we will see, like there's a kiddo that's been billed right now for like $38,000. But you have to budget for the $75,000 because I can't tell you if that kid's going to catch COVID three times next year and be out of school for 15 days. The other thing that's really different since COVID is that if we have a private, special purpose private school that is in a COVID outbreak, then we are billed on enrollment, meaning your kiddo doesn't go to school for two weeks because you have somebody in your family that's immunocompromised, you're not risking it. It doesn't matter whether that kid goes to school or not, we're billed. Like there's a recent special purpose private school that we utilize that has been in outbreak status. And so since the start of that outbreak status till the end of that outbreak status, we are billed for every single student, whether they attend or not. So yes, we have some students who have come in under what we expected, but that's because there have been some significant medical issues that have kept them out of school. If you go to a placement in New Hampshire, anything out of state, we've only had to do that with one student because of the needs, New Hampshire does not do it that way. You are billed whether you're there or not. That's the New Hampshire rules. And so that tuition doesn't fluctuate, you pay for every day.
Out of curiosity, for our tuition students, do we, so if they decide they're not going to come on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, do we charge for that or do we not? Only, do we only charge for the days they attend?
No, and the difference between us is we're not, we don't raise to the level of a day treatment program and those are the rules for day treatment. So what, the only thing that we can bill for, for tuition, is exactly what it costs us, divided by the number of students we have in the program. So if I have a classroom of six students, I'm a teacher and I have an ed tech, and that sixth student is out sick that day, the cost for us remain the same because the teacher and the ed tech are still there. So there's restrictions on what you can bill for in terms of tuition because it only can be based on the cost you incur and divided by the students versus we don't bill out main care. We don't bill any ed tech services through main care, which day treatment programs do. So I think that we don't get billed for the tuition on that day, but the other pieces remain intact for the out of district. It's two very different funding mechanisms.
So if we have 175-day school year, but someone who's on a tuition only attends 150 of those days, it's not going to change what their tuition is?
No.
From whether they did 150 or they were there every single day?
Right.
Unlike what we're talking about with the outside placement for the day treatments?
Right.
The only ones we prorate are if they start in the middle of the year.
Yes.
That's the only time we prorate it.
And I think it's important just to note that we can get these letters from these special purpose private schools in the middle of the summer. We can get them when school starts. Like we never know when we're going to get a letter that says we're changing how we're doing things and then we kind of have to, okay. So.
I, I think the other piece that is, that has been a change that has significantly impacted the budget from our perspective for out of district students. So typically, students go to school 175 days and then there's an IEP team meeting to determine whether or not they need summer services. And there's a very specific guideline, summer services are not about making more progress. Summer services are about will this student during this break regress so much that they won't be able to make up, right, those pieces in a short period of time, say the first quarter, four to six weeks. All except one out of district placement now has changed their format and they say we are a year-round medical model school. If your student needs our services, they will attend school for 232 days. So they actually go to school more than the administrator's contract require them to work. They go to school during February vacation, they go to school during April vacation. And I have feelings about that in some regards. I feel like it takes part of that determination out of the IEP team's hand. But on their end, they're, that's their program, that's how they're running it. And if you make application to that program, that's what you're signing up for. And so I don't know of any other program now that services students with severe autism that hasn't gone to that model. So we have some students that it may be appropriate for them to go an extended, extended school year, three days a week, or go Monday and go Friday, but they don't, they're not going to regress to that point. We have that option with one particular out of district placement, we know- We have that option with one particular out of district placement. We no longer have those options. We send them there, it's every day that they're, including vacations. So that is an impact on the budget because we're transporting students during break time that we don't normally transport, and we're paying for services. And again, for me, I believe strongly that kids need to be connected to their community. So if the natural breaks during the year, students are not having access to their community because they're in another school in another district, I think there are costs to that that we need to evaluate and look at. Special Ed Advisory Committee topic. Any other question? Any other questions about the Bridge? I know there was, I, I think there was a lot of people wanting information, so I'm happy to answer anything.
Well, you gave us the tuition costs for out of district. What, does it, does it look like, do you have it broken down for, if they stay?
So it's around thirty-five thousand, thirty-five to thirty-seven thousand per child. And. Yep. Yep. And our bridge budget is not changing from last year to this year. So that one has no bearing on the increase, other than regular wages.
Right, but there's no additions.
That actually went down slightly because we had estimated some of the teachers, and we estimated high, so.
So for the out, just to be clear, so the out of district tuition is thirty-five thousand?
No, that's, the, when we tuition, when we send Kenny Bunk a bill for one of their students, it's around thirty-five thousand dollars for that child to come here to the Bridge.
For one year?
For one year. So would you think your out, outside placement, if they went to a different programming, they would be paying more, like seventy-five to a hundred thousand for all those days?
So we're offering a deal?
We are.
And I wanna say, last year, when we were having this meeting about this topic, that I thought that it was higher. I thought we were in the sixties.
No, no.
So has there been discussion about us increasing the tuition, given that all the other outside programs are around a hundred thousand?
We can't. We have to do it just based on what it costs us to run the program.
Getting back to what you just said.
Cost only.
Okay.
So what we do is we take the budget and the estimated number of kids that the program can hold and divide it out, and we come up. Last year, it was thirty-five something is what we're charging out to the other programs, to the other schools that are sending kids.
And last year, when we were discussing sort of breaking even, and I, I wish I, I should have brought my notes from last year. I can't remember how many students that we were saying that would kind of put us in the green versus the red.
I think we were at just around six or seven kids is what we had estimated for tuition in total.
To kind of even us out?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're at four?
We're at four.
Okay.
We had lost a couple of the high schoolers, which brought us down because we, last year, it was four kids in just high school.
Yep.
But we've, they've graduated.
Yeah, and it's, we have the referrals. It's just we don't have the staff.
That was gonna be my question, Stacy, is are we confident in that there's referrals, and what are the barriers, the challenges for us staffing?
I have two directors emailing me every day wanting an update. I, I will be perfectly honest. I think that the directors in surrounding areas, we have had, since the opening of the Bridge, we've consistently had tuition students from one particular school district. Every single year, yes, every single year. And where their first option for kids that have, need that type of programming, certainly not students that have severe autism. We also have had regular tuition students from Acton. And there is a student right now that they're asking us to program for, and our barriers are staffing. You know, one of the pieces that has been difficult is that we currently are five and have been all year, five staffing positions short. It isn't because we haven't advertised. We have advertised, we have reposted it, we have changed the wording, we have done job fairs, we have talked to friends of friends, it's like we've networked. And that, to me, is a discussion, I think, for the Special Ed Advisory Committee. It's a national issue, and we have to look at how we're gonna do it differently, or we're gonna be in big trouble.
Because I think one of the things we're looking for here is last year, we, one of the big parts of last year's budget was expanding the Bridge, and so we did a lot of work to try to project that. And part of that was understanding having to grow with that, and so right now, I think we wanna first of all evaluate this from the standpoint of, is the Bridge a good resource for us? Does it make sense in terms of programming for our students? I think that's where you'd wanna start with, with the students, and then also financially, is there, are there benefits to that as well? I think what you said was, you have two directors, they're not our people. These are outside school districts that are interested in reaching out to say, hey, are you at a point yet where you're taking people? And so there's a need there. We're just not there because of the challenges that we've had in the area of staffing.
Right, and I do think that I, I, I'm not sure the best way to reflect this, or the best way to make sure that you have to look at the Bridge program in terms of, if we did not have that programming, what would be the cost to our budget? And right now, the cost to the budget, let's forget the high school because that's been in operation now for eleven years, but let's just look at the expansion. Four with a referral in the elementary and eight in the middle school. Every one of those students would have to go out of district. And so I wanted to just look at my data, and when I look at the average costs, and this is tuition only. So you have anywhere, I'll just, I think it's easier to give it what they charge us a day, and this is just tuition, and so for a lot of places, related services, BCBA or psych, a lot have psychological consults, occupational therapy, speech therapy, it's kind of, it's all à la carte. So you pay tuition, and then you pay extra for all of these other avenues. Some do it that way, others don't, and there's a list of which ones. Again, we could take a deep dive into that in the Advisory Committee. But the average, the lowest daily rate for a placement is three hundred and seven dollars a day. And then that goes to the highest daily rate that's charged, four hundred and twenty-two dollars a day. So when you average, when you multiply that by either a hundred and seventy-five or two hundred and thirty-two, that ends up anywhere between seventy-two thousand dollars and a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars with the added services. So there's a range, and we have to build the budget based on that because if we have kids that go every single day, that's what we're gonna get charged.
And our Bridge costs approximately two hundred dollars a day to run. If you take it, divided by one seventy-five.
And that, that number, though, to run the Bridge, just so I'm clear, Cheryl, is if we had full staff.
Yes.
So we are not, it's not costing that this year because we haven't had the ability to fill the positions. And so I honestly believe that the biggest impact has been at the middle school and the elementary level. We've had, the high school's used to having the Bridge as an option, and we have really had a lot of kids that have started with us and moved back. We had three students go back full-time. Two, one at the start of this school year, and the other two this semester. And I see that happening a lot with the elementary and the middle. That's our goal. That's why we called it the Bridge, because we're gonna help you get from point A to point B. So we would be two hundred dollars a day if we had five additional salaries and benefits attached to that. So I don't know what that looks like in terms of the cost this year. But I do know that we have a lot of staff that have worked really, really hard, and nobody's doing one job, and we're meeting the needs of a lot of kids, so I feel pretty good about that. Our total number right now this year is thirty, and when we talked last year, where we've been in existence and expansion since September, and we looked at a forty number of students being full population. So I think we've done okay in that we have it at thirty students right now with missing two teachers and three ed techs.
So what, we're hearing, like, with the staff that we don't have, what staff do we currently have today?
We have five teachers instead of six. We have three ed techs instead of six. I have a school counselor and a LCSW, two very different roles in terms of credits and those pieces. And then Jeff Tid had been hired as a clinical supervisor. Because we didn't have a clinician this year, he's actually picking up a clinical caseload of our elementary and our middle school, and then supervising two of the teachers, which has worked well in clinical supervision, and then there's, and that's, they're only part-time, two days a week. And then Charlie Whitehead is the clinical supervisor in the Bridge program, who's been there for eleven years.
And he's part-time also?
Two days a week. And we have had a BCBA and a BCBA assistant, but they are ending their contract. And we had contracted with them for thirty hours a week, but it hasn't worked out to be thirty hours a week since the start of the school year.
Stacy, are there any of these positions staffing that you went in for the Bridge that is paid? Is this all out of local, or is some of that, of some of those positions?
No, this is a great example, Matt, of how we can use IDEA to supplement because we have psychologists in our schools, and so Charlie Whitehead is a psychologist, and Jeff, we have social workers, so we're able to pay the Charlie Whitehead and Jeff Tid out of our IDEA money so that it supports the work that we're doing, but not in the local budget.
But the teachers, ed techs, counselors, school counselors, social worker are in the regular budget?
I think there are two ed techs that are in, from this, that are in IDEA. There, yeah, there are two ed techs because we had two student people, they retired, yeah.
Two ed techs and the clinical supervisors that are part-time.
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
I have a quick question. So if the five positions that you're saying are short are already part of this past year's budget?
Yes.
You're not, you're not adding any additional?
No.
Support to Bridge for that?
No.
If you maintained and hired those five positions, we then could start getting some out of district referrals? That's what, that's what we need to get the out of district referrals that you're, that you're waiting for?
Well, I, I mean, that's what we need to program for people that have asked us, right, if we could take their students into as tuition students. I think that the tuition students that we have is, is an absolute plus. I think our, our first priority and our focus is making sure that I, I meeting the needs of our students within our community and not having us have to send kids out of district. But if we had full staff, we would be able to have more students, absolutely. Like, right now, there were two referrals at our elementary level that if we don't, if I don't figure out a plan, they may have to go out of district, and.
Those are Sanford School Department students.
Correct.
And so I think the logical question that then comes into, do we have anybody who is currently going to an outside placement that could be serviced by the Bridge if we had the appropriate staffing?
Yes. We've already brought back the majority of them, no matter, you know, this year, but we have two students right now that are currently out of district. One's needs more severe, and I'm a little more leery about that student's fit than the other, but they are currently in a day treatment program in Portland. And if I had another middle school teacher and an ed tech, I would be looking to bring them back. Those conversations have already occurred.
Do you have, as part of the slides, what the articles when we were doing? Just so that we can look at that as we're talking from the other day?
So. Article two is special ed.
And I think we've got coming up, because a big part of what we put on there was the.
New staffing.
The new staffing. So we do, so we do have that slide coming up.
Yeah, we have another, one more slide. Well, we have two more slides, right? We didn't go over enrollment. And so the enrollment number, the, the piece that I, I want to point out when you look at the bottom, so we do child count October first, and we do it again in April. So I'd just like to draw your attention over to the October first, two thousand and twenty-one child count when we started, which was six seventy-seven, and then the April first, two thousand and twenty-two child count, which we did, which was seven hundred and fourteen. I show you those numbers because that is when we saw the impact of the pandemic pretty significantly, and it's reflected in those numbers. What typically happens is referrals start coming in in October, so by October one, we do not have the numbers of special ed students that are in the referral process that are going to be identified. And the way the state does it is what students are identified under special ed on this date. So then you're able to capture, right, those other students on April first. There used to be a December first child count, and the state got away from that as a point, data point for them. So then, when you look at, I, I do think that we have the averages, but the piece around this is those averages are deceiving in that when it's April first, on April first, I have seven hundred and fourteen students that need to have their needs met. And until one of them either ages out, no longer needs special ed, or moves, those are the students that I have. You see a lot of change over the summer. It's a logical time for kids to move out of the district if families are moving, other families to move in. I think it's important to note that this October first number was seven hundred. What we know with that number is the referrals for students come in after October. So I would be expecting that our numbers in April will be significantly higher. The other data point that was interesting to me is that there was only a fourteen student difference between April first, two thousand and twenty-two, and October first, two thousand and twenty-two. And we usually see more of a change in that in terms of students. Some students will be homeschooled, some will go to private school, some will, you know, they'll, their families will move. And so this is just demonstrated, in my opinion, what we see day to day. I'd be interested in your thoughts, in that the needs of students are significantly more.
It's actually higher because I did it now earlier when you were, when we were talking about the level A. This doesn't include?
Correct.
The, our, the district and the Bridge, but that's an additional.
This was as of October first.
Right.
New numbers were as of today.
And that is absolutely what, right on the nose because we, we use data that people, if you went to the Maine Department of Ed website, if you went, it would be the same data. So people would know that when we're, we're laying data for you, but this is a good example of how special ed fluctuates like that. Right now, we have thirty-nine, and we are in February. Oh, we're in February. We have thirty-nine additional students besides what that child count said.
And what that doesn't, what that number doesn't tell you is where those students are. So that, that number doesn't tell you if they're level A, B, C, or D. It doesn't tell you if they're coming in as speech-only students, or if they're coming in needing significant programming, which requires additional staff because of the safety or significant nature of, you know, their needs. So it's, it's an increase in number, but it doesn't tell you the increase in level of need the student has.
Can I just ask, Stacy, that seven hundred number, does that also include the students that are?
are out of district?
Yes.
Okay.
But what, what's happened is, it's not that it doesn't include the out-of-district. So that the numbers that are given in that quadrant are as of this weekend when Tam. So there are more students in our, there are more students in our school than, I love having just my own paper copy, except when it's double-sided, then I'm like, God, help me. So yes, the October 1st, but what that doesn't capture and what's captured in that four quadrant and the enrollment numbers is the referrals that we've processed and identified since October 1st to now, which is why we're at 739.
But when you look at it, the increase from 2021 to 2122 was an aggregate of nine and a half students. And then the increase from 2122 to this year was an aggregate of four and a half students.
Right. I think the, the piece that I'm not being a great job at articulating is that, yes, over that span of time, but that doesn't mean that in that moment of time, like right now, the aggregate number of students might be a change of six, but two of those students have moved in that need specialized beyond our typical out-of-district placement. So it, it may be a small number in, when you're adding, we're looking at the start of the school year to the end of the school year. But in special ed, you can't look at it that way as it's only data point because you're servicing students that have been identified. So there are 714 students in April 1st. Right now, in February, there's 739. So between October and now, there are 39 additional students, which over time may look like nine or 10 students, but the impact day-to-day is almost 40 students. Does that make sense?
Well, I just wanted to point out, when you're saying 39 students, it's hard to look at that in comparison to up above. So we needed, I needed that explanation.
Yeah.
That helped me to be able to understand that.
Which is why I think the part is that, that's why I had said, which is a very good point, Matt, is that I tend not to look at averages with this, because averages don't tell you over time, and a 2122 average means the October 1 and the April 1, but combined over the entire year. But it doesn't account for those swings of like 700 to 739 of what we're dealing with in a four-month period.
And I'm trying to also quantify the impact of COVID and coming back and where that was probably in leading to more consideration or increases in referrals, which would be a natural outcome because you had people who through that had some learning loss or some educational recovery. Is that, or, or, has that, are we, has that impacted us, number one? And if so, is it continuing to impact us? Is it leveling off or is it decreasing?
Very good questions, because I was hoping I talked with the IEP coordinators just to get an update today and the timeframe. I can certainly get that to people, we can talk about that. But what we have seen last year and this year, typically, we did not see a lot of initial referrals once you get to middle school. If you have a disability and it's raised to the level of a handicapping condition for you educationally, that's typically picked up before, you know, K to 4. It's very unusual unless something's happened. A kid has fallen, there's a traumatic head brain, you know, brain injury, some trauma has occurred and it's just been discovered and, you know, the kid is really struggling with anxiety, whatever, since then. What we have noticed is that our referral numbers at the middle school and at the high school have increased significantly. And I don't expect that that is going to stop. When I look at the research nationally, and Tam and I have talked about this, there's two trains of thought. One train of thought is we're looking at a five-year impact. The other train of thought is we're trying to continue to do special ed like we used to do special ed, and life is not the same as it was before. To me, the jury's out on both of those. What I know in the day-to-day is that I have a four-day-a-week psychologist at the high school that is doing more initial referrals than she has since she's been here, which is about 19 years. And that's the same feedback that Tam and I have had to work with our middle school psychologist in figuring out and prioritizing which ones are, you know, an initial referral needs to be done, a reevaluation, because the initial referral numbers are significant. And I've asked both the IEP coordinator at the middle school, and we have an IEP coordinator meeting to gather that data so that we would know what it is.
I think it's, it's, it's helpful when we see these sort of numbers per school, right? Because like when I look at that and I'm, it's a, it's, you know, Carl Lamb, 120. So that's approximately 40 more students with increased needs, regardless if it's speech and language or even further. So 120, right? And then you've got-
How is that 40 more? I don't know where you're seeing that from, Amy.
Okay, so 84.
To the other two elementary schools.
You're gonna add almost 20, and then another 20.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, and then the, then at Pride, you've got 80. So, you know, when I'm looking at the budget in Article 2 from the other day, when it's saying special ed resource room at Carl Lamb, makes sense, right? Because they have 40 more kids, approximately.
And part of that, just remember that Carl Lamb houses a different kind of program-
Sure.
-than our other two elementary. And so Carl Lamb has three more or four more classrooms than the other, other buildings do because of the nature of the disability and then-
That kind of goes along with my continued question.
Yes.
Is, so in the sense, when we're talking about those increased numbers, the four additional smaller classrooms with higher needs, do they, do they have the same amount of sort of resources in speech therapy, OT, PT? You know, they have got the same amount of social worker, same amount of counselor, school counselors, right?
They're more.
They do have more?
Carl J. Lamb significantly.
Because that would be helpful for me, moving forward, to see, and I don't know about anybody else, but for every school to be broken down of how many special ed staff are in each school in comparison to the numbers of students that they have. Because it does really, huh? For equity, yeah. And, you know, because 40 more kids, I mean, that's a lot.
And we need to find out, I think that, I think the, yes. And I think the piece is, is that, do we have equal number of classrooms in general between Carl J. Lamb, MCS, and Pride, is my first question? So if we have 20 classrooms in Pride, do we have 20 classrooms at Carl J. Lamb and at MCS?
Within one of each other.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we do have, and I can get this to you, but you can actually go on the website. We just had, it may be needing to be updated a little bit from just this school year, but we have an organizational chart that's listed, and it's a really good visual, because it will tell you and show you, Carl J. Lamb, here are all the teachers. When you look at that, you will see a much significant, the ed techs are probably double the ed techs we have in any other school building right now. So we can get you those numbers, but if you want to look at it before, then there, we update that organizational chart, so it shows, you know, Tammy and I, and then lists it out based on teacher, how many ed techs flows out from the IEP coordinator, who they're responsible for.
And that's where?
It's on the website.
Oh, okay. I'll have to go look. When I go looking at staff, in fact, I just had to do this the other day, because I was looking up something, needed to email somebody. I, I only know about going to the staff, and then it's overall, everybody's in a medical order, and then you're gonna figure out-
I think if you go to the school, Amy, if you go to the school, I'll have to find out, it may be on the district one, but, yeah, it's there and-
So the other piece with the related service providers is that it's based off of caseload as well. So we have, so we typically don't have a huge caseload in the district for physical therapy. And so we might have a physical therapist that goes between two buildings.
Yep.
And then same thing, OT and speech, most of the time, like, they're in this building. We may have an OT that goes between two buildings, depending on the number of kiddos. But it's really based on how many kids does each therapist see? How many days that therapist is in district? And then we have some kids for therapy may need, for speech therapy, they might need 120 minutes. That's usually rare, usually it's like 90 minutes is the most, but 90 minutes. And then another kiddo across the district might only need 30 minutes every two weeks. So it also is based on how much time does that therapist need to be in the building to provide the services that that student has? And then if we don't have enough time with that one person, then we add another person and so on.
And the numbers really, that, we can add it to the list of the advisory council, because I do think that that's important, to sort of talk about like equity and also just kind of, you know, the numbers.
Yeah, and I, I think that absolutely, and I would add on that part, is that looking at numbers, but also looking at if they're an A, a B, a C, or a D. Because then that's going to tell you the level of services and how intensely involved.
Right.
If I have 60 kids that are level A-
Right.
-that might be done in two classrooms with an ed tech and a teacher.
Right.
If I have 60 kids that are level C, we've got some work to do.
And then actually goes on to like the last slide that we have.
Oh, yeah, the last slide that we have.
I think it's the last slide that we have.
It is.
Yeah.
So these are the ESER positions that we are proposing that go into the local budget. And at Carl J. Lamb, there are two positions. I did change it was, is because it's a self-contained, not a resource room, Cheryl? So out of the ESER positions, there's a self-contained at Carl J. Lamb Resource, a self-contained, a resource room at Carl J. Lamb, a self-contained. At Sanford Middle School, if you went back and looked at the, you can see the rationale there. If you go back and look at the numbers, all three middle, all three elementary schools do not raise to the number or just at the number of what we have at the middle school and the high school. And so proposing to combine an IEP coordinator position and an assistant director position, that would allow us to get another assistant director, but at a, not having a hundred and something thousand-dollar cost, so that we would combine those. We have two people on board that are our IEP coordinators, that are also certified as assistant special ed directors, so, and have desired to be in that role. It's also part of like our plan moving forward. Right now, we have age 5 to 22. The freight train for taking age 3 to 5 under a public school, I don't believe is going to be slowed down anytime. So I think it is really realistic that we are going to have ages 3 to 22 under the public school umbrella for special ed services. And so it seemed to me that this was a time when we could incur the cost of under $30,000 to get a position that is needed now and will certainly be needed in the future.
So I, I want to jump in because I just want to be clear.
Did I make a mistake?
Those first, those first three positions, the Carl J., the two at Carl J. Lamb, and the one at Sanford Middle School, resource room and self-contained, those are currently ESER positions-
Yes.
-in this year's budget. The assistant director increase and the social worker at the high school are not in ESER positions. So we're gonna be, just so you know, we've got a plan, we'll present the ESER positions at our next workshop, but you, those three top ones are not going to be in that plan because we've removed them from that plan to move them into this budget. And the reason we've done that, do you want to speak to the reason we've done that for that move?
Yeah. So if we look back at the 2021 school year, maybe even before that, when we were all in COVID and trying to bring students back, at that point, when we had the COVID funds, we had identified the need for these positions in order to bring students back. But also, if you look back at the number of students that we had, our classrooms were getting larger and larger and larger. So back in 2021, for the resource room, we had, at that time at Carl Lamb, we had two resource room classrooms that were K-4, or K-5, something like that, sorry. Two classrooms, and there was 57 kids in those two classrooms. So we needed to be able to add another classroom. As of the last time we did rosters, which is like in January, we had it down to eight, three classrooms and 18 kids in each classroom. So much more doable. And then in the self-contained classroom, we started this school year with 34 students across those three classrooms, and that's more than 10 kids in the classroom, which is extremely high. We had kindergarten for the first time in our self-contained classroom come in with 10, 10 kids. We typically like to have that classroom to be around six or seven. So the numbers just speak for themselves in terms of, we started that classroom back when ESER was, excuse me, when COVID was a real issue and bringing those kids in, but our numbers continued to grow, and so that's the, why-
Remember, we wanted our kids back to school five days a week. And back then, we had some limitations for space, so that's where we added more staff to be able to do that.
Yeah.
I think what Tammy's saying is, we did that. Now, we're not trying to keep it at that. We've had increases in numbers-
Right.
-for the compliance. And I think the other thing that's important to point out is, how are we doing in the other schools? Because as, as the school committee knows, we're not afraid to move people around because to fill where those gaps are. And we don't have those now. We've reached points where the numbers are in the compliance is really what is driving the decision to move this. It's not that we'd like to keep our classrooms smaller than what they were before. Everyone would, but that's not what's driving it.
This is a perfect example of what we were saying before about, we have students move in, students move out, but you don't know where those students went. Well, for some reason, we have a magnet to our self-contained programs in Sanford. I mean, they're, they're good programs, and for students to come in and then be settled in, in those classrooms, it just jumps. So when we added one of these self-contained classrooms, we had six kids, and now it has 12. I mean, so that's just how it is.
And just to be clear, like, as a question, we, we are mandated to provide this, and so this is what it is. Like, we have to do that.
And I do think it's a good topic, Amy, for the advisory committee. One of the pieces, and Steve can talk about this with Matt or Cheryl, because I've said it a lot. We are the one entity, education, where the law says you must provide this regardless. You cannot consider money, you cannot, it is what the needs of the student. I am a believer in systems approach to working with children, and there are other systems out there that don't have the same mandate. And we are noticing a bigger and bigger gap around that in the needs that we are being asked to address educationally. And I think it's time to bring some stakeholders to the table, like the Juvenile Justice and the Office of Health and Human Services, and community providers that are case managers to say, we're all in this together, and how do we figure out? I know that you don't have any services. I was just talking the other day, and I said, here's the difference. You get to say as a psychiatrist, I'm full, I can't take anymore. That doesn't exist for us in special ed. I can't say, I'm really sorry, I don't have a spot for you in any of my classrooms. We hope we can get to you in a couple of months. And so there's a very different constraint, and the standard for special ed is very high. So I do think that would be a great conversation to see, how can we sort of look at how we all work together around that?
So that kind of helps give a rationale for those top three positions. Stacy, I'm going to ask that we jump down.
Social worker.
Yeah, and come back, because the school committee knows, back, to be, back in January, we had a school committee meeting with a presentation, the school counselors came in, our social workers came in. And so based on that, I think you can see the rationale, right? Right now, there's a caseload between 70, 90 students per year, when we're looking at a caseload of normally of 50. And I think what we can see is, we're all concerned about where people are today, especially coming out of COVID. You can look at the mental health concerns and issues. Everything is elevated to that point, that now we're seeing this also. So there's, there's the rationale for that position. I don't know if there's anything else that you're seeing in your end, Stacey, to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, it was pretty straight and simple about the rationale, although Beth and I have worked together on this around, this has been a steadily- and I have worked together on this around, this has been a steadily increasing problem in terms of the needs, and the role in special education in the school setting is to support that student in accessing their education. And that is a difficult concept for people to understand. We don't do treatment. Because if you are, you know, the survivor of sexual abuse, and you have a lot of trauma or anxiety around that, it's really not a great idea for us to get into it, and then the time's up, you've gotta go to math class. And our role is to support kids in their, in whatever their disability is in accessing their general ed. So, there's a lot of different ways that you can do it. You can do it in group settings where you're maximizing your services and having a clinical person with, with groups, and so, the need for this other position at the high school has been there for at least four years. And we've worked on making sure that people that get social work as a related service is really about those that need that. Is there another way? Does somebody, a student need a check-in with someone and a checkout with someone versus social work services? And the numbers are astronomical, and they have been. And so, despite all the different types of interventions, and Beth was doing the presentation, and when she showed it to me, I was like, well, that's gonna stick out pretty much because she has an astronomically high caseload, and the, the needs are there. So, and that's our presentation.
Well, Ed, do we need to circle back about the assistant director? I, I was jumping around a little, so I just want to make sure that people have an idea because these are, when you look at differences in the special education budget, this is where you're seeing a major part of them because of, these are gonna be added positions coming into that, into that budget.
Can I ask one question, Cheryl? So, a couple of these positions, that's, the, the budget increase is based on the person that's currently in the ESER position, right?
Correct.
So, for example, if a person should retire, and they're on the highest end, and we have someone with five years' experience, we don't know it, but that could be a saving, right?
Correct. Yep, yep. Yeah, whoever was in that position at the time is what, how we budget-
Yeah, that makes sense.
And if it's vacant at the time, we do an average of 10 years of service, because a lot of times, especially with special ed, you don't expect to bring somebody in as a newbie. And I always estimate health insurance as two-person.
And just, when I'm looking at the enrollment numbers for special ed right now, as of October 1st, so, the high school has, you know, so the middle schools get the most, it seems, they're 237. How, how many special ed social workers do they have? They have two.
Yep.
And so, the high school only has one with a close second of 178. Hence the need, yeah. And then, but then Pride, MCS, and Carl Lamb all have one?
I think the other factor, Amy, is that the older you get, the more able you are to communicate, we hope, right? Your needs, and there's a different level of development and stuff, and so, there are significantly higher needs in terms of services at the elementary level, but-
So, nice job. I want to circle back to when we did present the Article, we buy Articles by summary, you'll notice that the special education budget is up 15%, 1,455,000. Almost 10% of that is through the salary and benefits with the positions that we've already talked about. Contracted services had a decrease of 2.1%, down to, or down 20,000. Purchased services had an increase of 644,000. That increase is due to tuition of outside placement agencies. And then, we also had supplies decreased, and that was due mainly to the one-time costs we had last year to kind of start up the expansion of the bridge with that. And then, when you just look at turning the page for special education Article II, that was an increase of 10.8%. So, I wanted to be able to at least give people a context in terms of, that's what you saw initially, now you've seen Stacy kind of, and Tammy do a nice job of going behind that. Are there any questions that the school committee has, coming from at least the special education budget?
I just have one question. So, if our insurance is up 9%, that's a big portion of that 10% increase, is that correct?
Well, yeah, it's a portion of it, yeah. So, what I did is, actually, I took their total budget, and 84.6% of their total budget is salary and benefits. So, they've, which is over, just under 9.5 million. Outside placement is 7.3% of their budget. And then, the remaining, everything else is the remaining 8.1% of their budget. So, when you look at that, really, salary and benefits is pretty much their whole budget for the most part. So, it's very tough. It's, it's people.
Hard, work, and fun-loving, kid-loving people.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, do we mind, can we go to, I just want to give an overview of kind of where we are in the intro for next Mondays, for our next budget workshop? If you could bring up what she sent you, Beth? Okay, so-
My new kids are back.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about ESER positions next Monday in more detail. I just, we just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview for that. So, if you look at it, in our first year of ESER, remember it was a three years, we had 52 positions. Our goal at that time was to get our kids back to school. We wanted our kids back to school five days a week. We wanted to address educational recovery, learning loss, that was adding more staff. And then, we also wanted to address the social, emotional needs of students. In this current year, we went from 52 positions, okay, wait, are we in-
So, this is last year.
So, this part is last year. So, last year, we had 52 positions in the ESER budget for a total of $3.4 million in salary and benefits.
Okay, that's the, no, that's the year we're in now.
We're in now.
And now, we've got 52 positions. We, that was down from what our first year was, okay? What we're looking to present next week, in our next meeting, is that we've got one more year of ESER positions that way to do that, and that is down, go to the next slide.
Right, and that grant ends at the end of September.
So, our plan is to go from 52 positions down to 36. Some of those positions are into the local budget. That wasn't done by, that was done out of more necessity in terms of, we've already talked about the English as a second language services. For example, we talked about today with the special ed portion of that. So, we'll dig into this deeper next, at our next meeting, but we wanted to give you an overview just in, in your minds of 36 positions there. We look at that as what we have budgeted left is just under $2.5 million, and what we have budgeted with those 36 positions is 2,344,000. Go to the next slide? Okay, so now, where are we now? Before we get to that, here's where we are. The taxation increase to this school budget for 2324 is at 25.5%, okay? We had less subsidy in adult education than what we'd anticipated by 14,935. So, we have to add that back into the budget. We then looked at using our reserves, because remember, that 25.5% doesn't take into account the use of reserves. And then, we also looked at our use of our carryover. Do you want to talk about how we got to that, those numbers of 610 and 532?
So, the 610 is using a little bit of all of our reserves, some of it coming out of the capital reserves, so about 13, just over 13,000 is coming out of the capital reserves. The health insurance reserves, we're using approximately $437,000 of the, of that. That's bringing the 9% down to a 3% increase, so we're doing the 6% piece as saying we're gonna use reserves to cover that.
But the 9% is still part of that 25.5%.
Right. And then, we're going to, or we, we're putting fuel, to use some of the fuel reserves at $40,000, and then taking the remaining of the special ed reserves of 119,000, for a total of 610,000. So, that's how the use of reserves are going. For the carryover, we were looking at, I divided by the current budget to create my percentage for what we have in carryover, and so, what I did is, I took the amount to bring it down to 3% of the current budget, so that was $532,000. So, that brings it so that we would still have 3% of our carryover left, so that for the next year or, or carrying on.
So, with that, if we are taking that plan of using the reserves that way and using carryover, that would bring down that from 3.9 to 2.8, and that would move it down from a 25.5% increase to taxation to an 18.2% in taxation. So, and next week, we'll look into the, what we have for a plan for those ESER positions, for those 36 ESER positions. We'll be able to go into, present those. I think we also can start to look at some other suggested cuts that are things for us to consider. I don't think, Cheryl, that we'll have information on the health insurance on the 13th.
Keeping my fingers crossed, but I don't think it'll be ready by next week.
And what I mean by that is, there may be a chance there that that 9% increase that we've budgeted, fingers crossed, that can come in less than the 9%, and so, that will also be going towards that number as you look at that. So, I kind of wanted to put that into, as we, a lot of this is where we started, and then as we come back to kind of tell our story in terms of those changes and the things that we're gonna be able to make. Because ultimately, on February 27th, we are gonna, three weeks from today, we are gonna be looking at voting on a budget that we will presenting to the city council to go on to the next step. Questions? Anything else, people wonders? Tammy, Stacy, thank you, much appreciated, to help us understand the special ed budget. Also, looks like we got some topics, I think, to also be able to start looking at the Special Education Advisory Committee, which is something that we're gonna want to get going and start it up on. And the timing's difficult because of where we are in budgets, but that's something I think will be a good start for us to be able to do that. And then, we will, any other requests from the school committee in terms of next Monday's meeting, the next budget workshop? Is there any information that you are curious about or anything that you would like? Be thinking about it, and those would be some things we'd want to be able to have with that. So, with that, I think we are ready for-
To adjourn?
Tammy and I planned it, just so you know, so that you'd have a 15-minute break. We were like, we're gonna get this done by quarter or six-
Thank you.
-give them a break before the school committee meeting starts.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, let me go.
Yep.
Recommendation to adjourn at 5:45.
I make a recommendation to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded?
I second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you, ladies.